The regular meeting of the Indianapolis City Council on Monday, July 14th, 2025 will be called to order at 6:00 PM. This time, please join us for the invocation given by Alderman Huntley, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I've chosen a invocation today that not quite as long as some of Alderman's gaze, but probably a little on the longer side. It is from a speech by President Jimmy Carter in 1979. He said, "I want to talk to you right now about a fundamental threat to American democracy. I do not refer to the outward strength of America, a nation that is at peace tonight everywhere in the world. The threat is nearly invisible in ordinary ways. It is a crisis of confidence. It is a crisis that strikes at the very heart and soul and spirit of our national will. We can see this crisis in the growing doubt about the meaning of our own lives and in the loss of a unity of purpose for our nation. The erosion of our confidence in the future is threatening to destroy the social and political fabric of America. The confidence that we have always had as a people is not simply some romantic dream or a proverb in a dusty book that we read just on the Fourth of July. It is the idea which founded our nation and has guided our development as a people. Confidence is the, in the future, has supported everything else, public institutions and private enterprise, our own families, and the very Constitution of the United States. Confidence has defined our course and has served as a link between generations. We've always believed in something called progress. We've always had a faith that the days of our children would be better than our own. Our people are losing that faith, not only in government itself, but in the ability as citizens to serve as the ultimate rulers and shapers of our democracy. We always believed that we were part of a great movement of humanity itself called democracy, involved in the search for freedom, and that belief has always strengthened us in our purpose. But just as we are losing our confidence in the future, we are also beginning to close the door on our past. Too many of us now tend to worship self-indulgence and consumption. Human identity is no longer defined by what one does, but by what one owns. And yet we've discovered that owning things and consuming things does not satisfy our longing for meaning. We've learned that piling up material goods cannot fill the emptiness of lives which have no confidence nor purpose. The symptoms of this crisis of the American spirit are all around us. This is not a message of happiness or reassurance, but it is the truth, and it is a warning. The people are looking for honest answers, not easy answers. Clear leadership, not false claims and evasiveness and politics as usual. What you see too often in Washington and elsewhere around the country is a system of government that seems incapable of action. You see a Congress twisted and pulled in every direction by hundreds of well-financed and powerful special interests. We must face the truth, and then we can change our course. We simply must have faith in each other, faith in our ability to govern ourselves, and faith in the future of this nation. Restoring that faith and that confidence to America is now the most important task we face. It is a true challenge for this generation of Americans. As one of the visitors to Camp David last week in 1979 put it, "We've got to stop crying and start sweating, stop talking and start walking, stop cursing and start praying. The strength we need will not come from the White House, but from every house in America." We know the strength of America. We are strong. We can regain our unity. We can regain our confidence. We are the heirs of generations who survive threats much more powerful and awesome than those that challenge us now. Our mothers and fathers were strong men and women who shaped the new society during the Great Depression, who fought world wars and who carved out a new charter of peace for the world. We ourselves are the same Americans who put a man on the moon. We are at a turning point in our history. There are two paths to choose. One is the path I've warned about tonight that leads to fragmentation and self-interest. Down that road lies a mistaken idea of freedom, the right to grasp for ourselves some advantage over others. That path would be one of constant conflict between narrow interests ending in chaos and immobility. It is a certain route to failure. All the traditions of our past, all the lessons of our heritage, all the promises of our future point to another path, the path of common purpose and restoration of American values. That path leads to true freedom for our nation and ourselves.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Yep.
Alderman Huntley. Alderman O'Neill.
President.
Alderman Pendell Charles. Alderman Lason.
President.
Alderman Shanna Meyer. Alderman Gay.
Here.
Alderman Savage.
Present.
Alderman Arnett.
Present.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended, postpone R 3025, the five-year consolidated housing and community development strategic plan on second reader until Monday, July 28th, 2025.
Second.
That was requested by the direct, Mr. Jakubiec found something in it. He wanted a week to stick. He didn't. No.
No.
It's under regletting.
So we're not starting the closed session until we approve the agenda. We're going to move into a closed session after this. So we're going to approve the agenda as amended to postpone R 3025, the five-year consolidated housing and community development strategic plan until Monday, July 28th. So still this month, but the director has requested that.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is business miscellaneous, beginning with ID 12025, a proposed closed session. Pursuant to, in the annotated code of Maryland general provisions, Article 3-305B7, discussion topic legal update from the Office of Law.
Don't move.
Yeah. At this time. So can I take a vote on that, please? We're going, running it? Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to move pursuant to annotated code of Maryland general provision, Article 3, 305B9, to go into closed session. And we've got a second on that. Thank you.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So let's get us closed down. Everybody good?
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for your patience. We will now resume our session. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is a ceremonial item, City Council Citation ID 12025, Annapolis Police Department College Scholarships.
Awesome to see so many people out here. Who's out here for the ceremonial items? Put your hand up, please. And whoever wants to come forward, please come forward. Alden Pendell Charles, are we going up on this?
All right, so continuing, there we go. So, yes, so in 2017, we started a scholarship program. We've given over 30 scholarships so far. And what's very unique, yes, thank you. And we give out $1,000 scholarships. And what's kind of unique with our scholarship program is that we've lowered the GPA a little bit. And you can also take this scholarship and take it to a trade school. So it's not just for college. So it works out pretty well for that. And these, there's five up here today, but there's six total that we're giving out $1,000 scholarships to this year. All right, so that's our kind of background.
I'll be brief. I would say, as the Chief of Police, this is real crime prevention. We have to invest in young people. And if we want them to do well, then we have to show them. So I just want to thank Lieutenant Kraus and the men and women of APD and the Police Foundation for making all this happen. Thank you.
And I just want to point out, this is a police department that really has a heart and really cares about this community. And we strive to get better and better all the time. You know, nobody's perfect, but we feel like we really are on to something with the amazing people and the amazing kids and families that are from this community. This is a special place. And what you do makes it even more special. And so before we give out these citations, I will hand it over to Alden Pendell Charles, head of the Public Safety Committee, to read this citation. And I'll hold the microphone for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we couldn't be any prouder of our students here and what they've accomplished. And we're looking for much, much more out of you. You're our future leaders. And we applaud you. And we thank you so much for being there and being here, doing everything that you're doing. These citations go to Jessie B. Smith, Brianna Smith, LaKayla Johnson, Trishawn Henderson, Jay Johnson. And the citation reads as follows. "On behalf of the residents of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this City Council Citation in recognition of being named an Annapolis Police Department Scholarship Recipient. Scholarship funds can be used for college or trade school. Since 2017, nearly 30 scholarships have been awarded to Annapolis students. Congratulations on joining an amazing group of young people from our community. The funding for the scholarship program comes from several anonymous benefactors and community donations. For the fifth year, an anonymous donor made a generous donation in memory of those lost in the attack on the Capital Gazette in 2018. Gerald Fishman, Rob Hyacinth, John McNamara, Rebecca Smith, and Wendy Winters. As the Annapolis Police Department celebrates more than 150 years of service to the Annapolis community, we know that providing young people with academic and educational communities is important. We thank and support both our donors and our scholarship recipients. And we wish much success to you, presented to these individuals on this 14th of July, 2025. Gavin Buckley, Mayor, Harry Hunley, Ward 1 Alderman, Karma O'Neil, Ward 2 Alderwoman, Yours Truly, Ward 3 Alderwoman, Sheila Finlayson, Ward 4 Alderwoman, Brooke Shandermeyer, Ward 5 Alderman, DeJuan K. Gay, Ward 6 Alderman, Rob Savage, Ward 7 Alderman, and Ross H. Arnett III, Ward 8 Alderman. Congratulations, Godspeed to you all."
Elaine Jeffrey, we missed Elaine. So is that, sorry about that. I think it's probably in here. So we're going to hand these all out to you for a photo, if we can.
Elaine Jeffrey. Jay Johnson. LaKayla Johnson. Trishawn Henderson. And John. Double up.
Your next Annapolis City Council. Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with update from the mayor.
So, good evening. We have five meetings of this council remaining until the end of all of our terms. I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the work and sacrifice all the council members make in order to do this job. It doesn't come with a big paycheck or audible thanks, thank yous. But we are all here doing the best to improve our community. We'll keep doing that, just that, just that throughout the remainder of the year. And we'll work to ensure that all our priorities are delivered upon. So from me to you all, I want to say a huge thank you. Since we last met, we've had a very successful July 4th parade and fireworks event downtown. We had an incident with some illegal fireworks being set off at City Dock that night, which was quickly dealt with. The Annapolis Police Department did that and took care of that. Crazy kids. At this time of year, when fireworks are popular, it serves as a timely reminder that it's illegal to possess or discharge fireworks in the city of Annapolis without a permit issued by the state fire marshal. We ask everyone to familiarize themselves with the law. And if you are planning a celebration with fireworks, make sure you have a permit and be mindful that fireworks can be dangerous and frightening for both people and pets. I know my dogs get scared. So please be thoughtful, enjoy the Fourth of July, and have fun safely. We don't have any more regular scheduled parades until fall, when the rained-out Pride Parade will be back. It will take place in October on the 18th. So stay tuned for our last parade of the year. And it's a pride parade, so it will be a lot of fun. This Saturday on July 19th, the Annapolis Rex and Parks will host Community Fun Day to celebrate Recreation and Parks Month. There will be games, food, music, a petting zoo, stilt walkers, pony rides, crafts, live music, and more. That's this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Roger Pipp Moya Recreation Center. And that is free and open to the public. On Saturday, July 26th, the Ninth Annual Family Day Festival will take place at Bates from 10:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It will be, of course, another great event with face painting, great food, and incredible lineup of music. So please bring your lawn chairs, bring your kids, bring your family, and come and enjoy an amazing day in the city of Annapolis. Another quintessential NapTown summer event is the Rotary Crab Feast. That will take place on Friday, August 1st, at the Navy Marine Corp Stadium. This is a uniquely Annapolis event, the biggest one in the world, I believe, and a fundraiser for numerous community organizations that help our residents. So tickets are still available online, so get yours today to enjoy crabs, an Old Bay, and lots more in the name of a wonderful cause. It is a fantastic thing to do. If any of you haven't done it before, please join in. You'll be amazed. And lastly, the city has ongoing events throughout the summer and fall, including And lastly, the city has ongoing events throughout the summer and fall, including First Sunday's Dinner Under the Stars, City Dock Concerts, Tides and Tunes Concerts, and we hope to see you all and about enjoying Annapolis at these amazing events. So thank you all, and now let's get on with the meeting. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is reports by committees.
Aldum O'Neil.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee met last Wednesday. We had updates from the Transportation Department from SP Plus and Safer Routes. We also had an update on bird scooters and asked that the city and their contract do a couple of changes to that. One, taking off the sticker that says you can't ride it on the sidewalk, because in the City of Annapolis you can, and the second one being making the report a rogue bird scooter easier for people to report to, get those back into circulation and off the roads. We did have a report from SP Plus about data regarding Knighton Garage, Park Place Garage, and Gott's Garage. We were given a little bit of data after the meeting from Premium on Hillman, and we are pursuing a summons for Premium to come before the committee in September with accurate data and more data and an opportunity for us to ask some questions.
You?
Our next meeting is, sorry, Wednesday, September tenth, so that meeting.
Thank you. Aldum Shandermeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Economic Matters will be meeting this Wednesday on July sixteenth at six thirty. We have a very busy schedule, so please show up on time, and all who wish to attend are invited, and looking forward to seeing you.
You, Aldum Gay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This building is built in the seventy hundreds, and that storm outside, we could clearly tell, so I'll try to be quick tonight. We have our next meeting on the twenty-first of July at six thirty PM. It's a short agenda right now, but it will change, because very importantly, I have to have the property managers of Newtown Twenty and Woodside Gardens here before us. There have been some concerns from residents that have been approved for units, and then their approval applications have been deferred, and so they are not able to move into the units that they have been approved for. Major issue there, and so look forward to following up with that and hopefully getting some answers from constituents, for the constituents.
Thank you. Aldum Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last Environmental Matters meeting, we postponed action on Spa Road legislation, the oh twenty twenty-five. We needed to wait for the public hearing, which is tonight, but also we wanted to get a copy of the Phase Two Environmental Assessment, which has been sent to us, and we're having a joint meeting with Rules and Government Committee on July twenty-third at three PM.
Thank you. Aldum Finlayson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rules and City Government Committee met on last Friday, the eleventh. We discussed oh nine twenty-five, that's waterfront uses in the R four general residence zoning district. We opted to postpone action on that legislation until our September meeting. We also discussed oh twenty twenty-five, the sale of the Spa Road property. After much discussion, we decided we still needed more information, so we postponed action on that until our next meeting, which will be a special meeting on the twenty-third, which is next Wednesday, three o'clock here in council chambers, and it'll be a joint meeting with the Environmental Matters Committee. All are invited to attend. Thank you.
You. Aldum Pendel Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Standing Committee met on July the seventh. At that time, as we have been doing this calendar year, we've been focusing on a certain ward. This time, we focused on wards five and seven. Fire Department Chief Romali and Deputy Chief Lopez were present to answer questions from the committee. Office of Emergency Management Chief Simmons was present to answer questions from the committee. And for the Annapolis Police Department, Chief Jackson, Captain Howard, Captain McGeez, Captain Thacker, and Director of Internal Affairs Blue were present to answer questions from the committee. The next Public Safety Standing Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, September first. However, that is Labor Day, so we will have to get another date for September. Thank you.
What else? Aldum Huntley.
The Finance Committee met on this past Wednesday, or two Wednesdays ago, rather, July second, twenty twenty-five, and recommended unfavorably oh twelve twenty-five prioritizing affordable spending through expansion of financial advisory. I think Aldum, Arnett, and I are going to keep talking about that one, though, maybe work on some amendments. And then oh thirteen twenty-five was, which is compensation of mayor, alderperson, and city manager, was recommended favorably by two of the three members of the committee, and we had our current acting city manager to answer questions for us. We'll have our next meeting this Wednesday, but we are going to maybe see about canceling that, depending on how urgent we only have one or two things on the agenda are.
You? Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
So during comments from the general public, you may not speak on items scheduled for public hearing. There will be later on items for public hearing. There is a special public hearing for the Charter Amendment, CA one twenty-five. We'll call you up when that's due. Of your here on the limited short-term rentals per block face, that one, oh seventeen twenty-five, will have a separate hearing. Oh nineteen twenty-five, regulation of tours in historic Annapolis, will have a separate hearing. Sale of city-owned property, Annapolis Harbor lines, and election report deadlines. All of those will have their own individual hearing, and we'll call you up for those. If anyone is here to speak on anything else other than that, please come forward. The first person signed up to speak is Valenci Mills, I think, Valerie, sorry. Sorry about that. I butchered your name, Valerie. I apologize. Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Technical things. There we go. Again, my name is Valerie Mills Cooper. I'm the daughter of Walter S. Mills, whom whose name is being considered to addition to the Hillman Garage. I just wanted to give you a few things of his history, some of which you may not know or be aware of, and also I wanted to tell you about the word Negro. I'm using that because the time that my father lived, that was what we were being called at the time. So no disrespect to any of us, but just thought I should say that. My father earned his reputation as an outstanding educator and civil rights advocate in Maryland, doing his lengthy career as teacher and principal. He was always active in education, civic, religious, and social endeavors. He will long be remembered for his untiring service offered to the community. He also displayed an innate zest for high principles encompassing love of his fellow man leadership traits, ability to get along with others, and the ability to get things done to help others. He was involved in a spectrum of activities that encompassed many leadership ideals. While President, Principal, rather, I'm sorry, Parole School, which is now called Walter S. Mills Parole School, incidentally, he took a giant step in working towards justice in employment practices in the educational profession where there was discrimination in the salary to pay for black teachers and white teachers at the time. To correct such discrimination and cause equality, he was the plaintiff in nineteen thirty-seven to nineteen thirty-nine in a lawsuit filed on his behalf in the United States District Court to require equalization of salaries for blacks to that of whites. This court case was a victory for him and marked milestones in breaking the pay scale difference in Anarona County and the state of Maryland. His leadership continued after these great milestones, achieving many other things. He was led the formation of the Parole Health Center, now called Health Center at Parole, out in a community of parole. Prior to the formation of the erection of the Parole Health Center, he worked with the Parent Teacher Association of County Health Department in establishing a child health clinic in Cecil Memorial Church, which later moved to St. Phillips, Mount Olive Church. He met with physicians, others, in regard to the development of the Parole Health Center, which later caused the center to receive communications from many stating that succeeding and putting into practice some of the theories in their own communities and counties. He served as the president of the Board of Directors for the Health Center from thirty-one years, from nineteen forty-one to nineteen seventy-two. Things that he did in addition originated and developed the Parole Improvement Association, sponsored the first cleanup campaign in parole, sent requisition to the Board of Education of Anarona County for music teachers not charged enrollment, which became a reality as a result of his insistence. Responsible for getting expansion of supervision of Negro schools before integration. Did outstanding work in scouting, received special recognition for the Baltimore Area Council of Boy Scouts, served a president as the Anarona County Teachers Association for ten years, and was a pioneer president. Remained principal of Parole Elementary School and a growing committee for forty-six years. That doesn't happen anymore. He asked for increase in building when the school parole increased its population in nineteen fifty. He served as a board member of the YMCA for ten years, served on committees for the Maryland Educational Association for a number of years, first president and charter member of the Frontiers International, was a Mason, and many things in addition, and I'll try to go faster, not to take too much time. He was a member of the Advisory Board of Anarona County Mental Health, past member of Board Directors of Anaplas Neck Federation, past member of the Budget Committee of Anarona Community Chest, member of the Board of Directors of Fairfield's Nursing Home in Tronsville, which still operates today, a member of the Human Relations Committee, member of the Board of Education's Human Relations Committee, I'm sorry, I said that twice, member of the Retired Teachers Association. Things that he received or did after retirement were still impressive. He retired after, was appointed, rather, after retirement to eight years of the Board of Member, Board of Directors of Anarona Community College. One of his latest accomplishments at the time was to constitute a battle as he did equalization salaries and to equalize money for teachers at the community college at that point in time. He received after his return, retirement from Balder, from Parole Elementary School, many recognitions from the, I'm sorry, the governor, the mayor, an executive citation from Robert Pascal, human relations citation, management and task force recognition, service to parole community award, letter of recommendation from the faculty of parole school. These are many of the things that he accomplished. Now, I would also want to say that the equality case that I mentioned earlier from nineteen thirty to thirty-seven to thirty-nine, it's interesting that Mr. Noah Hillman was the lawyer for Anarona County schools at that time, in opposition to my father and Thurgood Marshall and the other two lawyers that he had at the time. So I hope that's giving you a little bit more insight on who Walter S. Mills was, what he accomplished, the things and people that he affected, and I'm hoping that you will consider adding his name to the name of the Hillman Garage. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward and speak on any other things besides the ones that we mentioned?
Can I just extend a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you very, very quickly. I just want to extend a comment to yourself and to your family, your father in particular. I just was talking to my grandfather very recently about the impacts of legislation like such. He went to Jones Elementary School before it was desegregated in Severna Park Elementary School. So this is something that is, you know, two generations away from me, and so I greatly appreciate, obviously, your father sacrificed, but you have sacrificed and continue to advocate for his name, and I would hope that the city council would pass this recognition, and thank you very much for being here.
Anybody else like to come forward? Last call for, yep, for open public hearing, yep. Here we go.
Can I go first? Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Renitra Anderson. My address is fifty-one Clay Street in Annapolis, Maryland. I am a descendant of the old fourth ward and a member of the Coalition of Atonement and Repair. Reparative justice is the process of acknowledging, addressing, and repairing the lasting impacts of harm, especially when the harm was systemic, collective, and racially or socially discriminatory. Okay? It goes beyond an apology. Reparative justice demands tangible actions, restitution, rehabilitation, compensation, and the guarantee that such harm will not happen again. Its key components are clear: acknowledgement of harm, a truthful, public recognition of what was done, responsibility, institutions or individuals take full accountability, restitution and compensation, resources or support are given to those who were harmed, rehabilitation, dignity and well-being are restored through housing, education, health, and economic opportunity, guaranteed of non-repetition. Policies and systems must change to prevent future harm. When this process is ignored, history doesn't fade, it repeats. Let me repeat myself. When this process is ignored, history doesn't fade, it repeats. As a resident of Ward Two, on the land of the old fourth ward, and as a community advocate, I see the same harms from urban renewal of the old fourth ward being repeated today: displacement of families. If the city doesn't take responsibility and act now, how can we trust that residents won't be pushed out again when Eastport Terrace, Harbor House, Robinwood, and O'Berry Court are redeveloped? Stolen land and community. In Ward Two, homes are being bought up, turned into Airbnbs, and stripped of their cultural value. There is no land trust, no protection, no community control. Broken promises. The old fourth ward was told that they could come back, but decades later, there's a parking garage and deeper disrepair. We were promised inclusion. What we got was displacement. And let's be honest, many descendants feel that the only time elected officials reach out is when they want to vote. Reparative justice is not charity. It is a responsibility. The City of Annapolis must start the process for the old fourth ward with as simple acknowledgement as I outlined, if we are ever to make progress on the issues of today. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Monday. My address is fifty-five Primrose Hill Lane. I live in the, I was about to say old fourth ward. I live in Ward Five. As a voting citizen in the upcoming election, student of reparative justice, and a volunteer member of the Coalition of Atonement and Repair, also known as CAR, of the core team, I'm here today to put some things on record. Our first speaker, actually, in our planned presentation this evening, was going to be Argo Duenas, who is the founder of the Coalition of Atonement and Repair, and unfortunately, she could not be here. She was going to share with you our mission, which I had just pulled up on my phone, so I'm apologizing here. The mission of the old fourth, or sorry, the mission, I'm very nervous, the mission of the CAR, which I will share in a bit, is to seek tangible repair for individuals, families, businesses, and communities impacted by discriminatory governmental actions through rehabilitation, restitution, compensation, satisfaction, and guarantee of non-repeat. Following the city council meeting last September, when over twenty descendants of the old fourth ward testified, and over seventy descendants and supporters stood with them in this room, Mayor Buckley met with CAR. He asked CAR for two things, for us, for CAR, to draft a resolution of apology from the City of Annapolis. We did. Quickly and in good faith, we submitted it after careful review with the old fourth ward descendants. We agreed because we assumed the reparative actions would soon be addressed by the council. His second request was to join us at the county. We appreciated the offer. We also understand that the county has a part in the urban renewal of the old fourth ward, but we also let him know that this could only happen after the city acknowledged its own harm. That resolution was essential before we approached any other leaders. The mayor sent our draft to the Office of Law, saying it would take two months. Meanwhile, CAR began to reach out to the council, because an apology means nothing without reparative action, and we needed their support. Alderman Shademeyer. Alderman Schademeyer, my councilman, and Alderman Gay took time to listen and support. Thank you. Others were passive, deflected, or even got defensive. Most gave the same rebuttal, blame the county and the state. Four months later, the city's legal office returned a gutted apology, two-thirds deleted, not an apology, barely an acknowledgement. As CAR's liaison, communications liaison, it was heartbreaking to deliver that insult to the Old Fourth Ward descendants. CAR requested a work session to present facts, data, and a path toward repair, perhaps some discussion and conversation. One was scheduled, but the council forgot to invite CAR. We asked for another, it was set, then canceled. Members had other obligations. Why would we join you at the county when you've shown such disregard here to the descendants of the Old Fourth Ward? I'm skipping ahead. The city must take the first step, own its role in urban renewal, and submit an apology and acknowledgement to the descendants of the Old Fourth Ward. Take the first step.
Thank you. Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, and I'm not sure whether the entire committee is aware, Alderwoman Pindell Charles and I met with the group and received a copy of the recommended resolution. I, in turn, passed that on to our legal department and asked them to help us write an apology as the first step only. Okay? So we should be clear, we understood that the apology was the first step that was being taken. And as Ms. Rodvian, Alderwoman, Councilwoman Rodvian said at the last meeting, at the last meeting, the county does have a significant role in this. So I just wanted to be clear, this is not a question, I just wanted to clarify the order of events that occurred. When I submitted the resolution to the body, I received a response that it was not acceptable. And so that ended our effort to write an apology for you. So thank you very much for your comments, I appreciate it.
And it was all, the apology was already with the city lawyer's office, because the mayor's office had already submitted it. I thought that your agreement was that you were going to check on it and get it back to us.
That was not.
That's what we had on record.
Excuse me. Good evening. My name is Hassan Powell, and I'm here as a proud member of the Coalition for Atonement and Repair. I'm standing with those families in Annapolis, still waiting on justice that has been delayed for over fifty years. Governor Wes Moore vetoed a state reparations study this year, not because he was against reparations, but because he believes that the time is now for action, and he's absolutely correct. Studies won't fix this, apologies alone will not fix this. Only action can repair Annapolis, can repair what Annapolis helped break. So now, let's speak plainly. The City of Annapolis played a pivotal role in the harm done to the Old Fourth Ward, and so far, it has refused to take responsibility for it. We came to you with facts, with testimony, and with solutions. We asked for a work session to show how to fund real tangible repair without touching the city's budget. The real issue isn't money, it really is political will. Mayor Buckley, let's talk about political will. You signed Annapolis onto the Cities for Action Coalition to protect immigrant cities, I mean, communities. You used ARPA funds to support families, and you used ARPA funds to support families the city didn't even harm, although we agree that they did deserve support. But let's be real, there was no fifty-year delay, no confusion, no talking of needing more time, more studies, or more approvals. You didn't shift the responsibility to the county or the state. You and the city council found the resources, and you kind of found it rather fast. But here's the thing, why weren't those same funds used to, to, why weren't those same funds used to first secure the interest of the Black people who descended from the Old Fourth Ward? You know, the ones the city actually harmed? Why is it that, why is it that justice for the Black community must be debated, delayed, dissected, while justice for others is swift and fully funded? That's, that's not a resource gap, that's a priority gap. We believe in justice for all, but how did we end up at the back of the line? In seven years, in seven months of your leadership, Mr. Mayor, you found the courage to protect others not hurt by Annapolis. So why after fifty-plus years can't you find the will to repair the Black people in this, in this city that harmed them? That's not a lack of funds, that's not a lack of respect, and I'm sorry, that's, that's not a lack of funds, but it is a lack of respect, and that is absolutely a choice. Where is the same urgency for Black people? Why are we still treated like we are at the back of the bus? This isn't just bitter displacement, this is a breach of trust. So tonight, I offer two simple asks. Mayor Buckley, fulfill your promise, issue a full written apology before the end of your term. It will not erase the past, but it can start to build a more honest foundation for the city's future. That moment can help clear, clarity, clarify your legacy, one that right now is clouded by the city's refusal to prioritize hacker residents, who are now forced to sue over their health conditions. And finally, to the, to the full council, give us a timeline. Let us know when this body plans to take real steps, not performative gestures towards reparative justice, because your unwillingness to work with us will not go unnoticed in this next election. We are not going away, we will return, we will organize, and we will remember who stood with us and who did not. Thank you.
Thank you. I will just say, we apologize as the city council, so I want to go on the record that we apologize, and we will keep working to draft an apology that is acceptable to all parties. Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak? Alderman Gay?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I just, you know, like to obviously point out myself, Alderman Schademeyer, working on the apology alongside the Office of Law. I accept the initial responsibility for delay there, but it is being handled with the Office of Law. I will extend the, you know, the same, obviously, opportunity to the Alderwoman of Ward Two, which is, you know, where the Old Fourth Ward was, to join us alongside in this legislation. It's fully drafted, there are small discrepancies that we're hoping to work out with the Office of Law, and, you know, hopefully the, the full council will support this, and so greatly appreciate you all coming forward.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak, please? Okay, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is consent calendar.
Now entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Mayor Buckley?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Huntley?
Sorry, what are you voting on?
Oh, aye.
Alderman O'Neil?
Aye.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Schademeyer?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Sack?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is public hearings, beginning with Charter Amendment CA 125, City Council Compensation Commission.
Anybody signed up to speak for that? Anybody like to come forward on CA 125, City Council Compensation Commission? Okay, I declare the public hearing closed on CA 125. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda for public hearings ordinance oh seventeen twenty-five, limiting short-term rentals per block face.
First person to sign up to speak is Gil, please come forward. Gil Grier, sorry. State your full name and address, didn't quite get it, thank you for being here.
I'm Gil Gil Day. I'm with Newport Condominiums, and I'm at three oh six Burnside Street, in the same community. But in any case, I'm here to speak against the bill. We have, we've looked at, at some of the numbers, but short-term rentals are less than thirty days, is the way it's set up. And I know there's long-term rentals, there are long, short-term rentals, which are more than thirty days, for about eleven hundred, but the number that I got was a hundred and fifty-six, but I think that's somewhat dated on short-term rental. And when you look at a hundred and fifty-six short-term rentals compared to the seventeen thousand people who live our homes in Annapolis, it's a miniscule amount. And when you consider there's sixty-eight hundred long-term rentals, and we are picking on this small group of people, where there's sixty-eight hundred people who, I know, because we have a lot of renters in Newport, they do cause a lot of trouble as well. And I don't think short-term rentals generally cause a lot of trouble. There's no evidence that I could find in police reports specifically attacking short-term rentals or referencing short-term rentals. But I'm sure other people will talk about the loss of revenue, and that's obvious that if we reduce these short-term rentals, families won't be able to come to our beautiful city. And it's too expensive to stay in hotels and take care of those things, and hotels will raise their rates because demand will be up. It also hurts the citizens of Annapolis, because they won't be, many of them, you rely on this money to stay in and pay their taxes and, and their mortgages. And it's, it's a bad thing, but going back to the long-term rentals, we should be treating them the same way as we treat short-term rentals. Charge them a four-hundred-dollar registration fee, charge them taxes, and treat them the same. I don't know why we should be treated differently than long-term rentals, especially when long-term rentals are, are a problem. There are a lot of low-cost law, low-cost long-term rentals, and those people require a lot of attention. Most people in short-term rentals don't. They want to take care of their homes, they want to make them appealing, they want to make it safe for their people, because you want to be a, I can't, a five-star member of Airbnb and air, MBRBO. But in any case, I'm sure other people will talk about the revenue side of it, but, and the fact that there, there is no evidence of short-term rentals causing problems. But I think what we really need to do is what we did in our community. We have four, five, right now we have five, one of them's up for sale, but we sat down and we talked to each other, and we created a curfew, which should, I think, could be something that could be put into the short-term rental license, a noise curfew and behaviors that we expect from our people. I think that rather than restricting and taking away people's rights to do business, taking away their revenue so they can stay in their home, is the wrong thing to do. So, and then also it puts hardship on the families that are coming here, I discussed that. But the other thing that is truly important to the city and to me, because I pay a lot of taxes to the city to stay here, is that if we do this, there will be lawsuits. Ocean City had a lawsuit, they wanted to make it minimum rental thirty days, thirty-one days, and they got sued by multiple people, and they lost. And they lost tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees. It's the same thing, if we talk to people and say, we're going to limit the number of houses per block, then guess what? You're going to be taking away people's businesses. And there's, that's called taking, as we're all, as I'm sure all of you are aware, and there are a lot of lawsuits about that. And if it's not a lawsuit, you have to pay to compensate them for the loss of that business. And it's not just the loss of the business this year, it's the loss of the business for a prolonged period of time. I don't want my taxes going up because we made a bad decision on this short-term bill. It's, it's not, it's not good. So, I love my town of Annapolis, and I want to stay here, and I want all those other people to do the same thing and enjoy themselves. And maybe what we need to do is get people to be civil and talk to each other, so when they do have a nuisance problem, they can fix it, because nobody wants to rent their house to a bunch of drunken partiers and have them destroy their home. There, it's too expensive. So, other than that, I thank you for your time, and any questions?
Thank you, Gil. It's just a listening session, so Alderman O'Neil?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just one question for you, you said you live in a condo association?
Yeah.
And how many units are in that?
Forty-four.
Forty-four?
Mm-hmm.
And you have four or five that are?
Right. And some of them, one of them is just like, you know, boat show and commissioning week. And that's, that is what a lot of short-term rental people are. And if you limit it to one per block or one per side of street, it just doesn't make any sense, because nobody's going to be able to, you know, the entire city for those events and others, like Parents Weekend and other things like that, those people are going to have to go out to Crofton or Bowie or, you know, Glen Burnie to get a hotel room. And, and they're willing to spend the money, but there won't be any place for them to go.
Just to be clear, this current legislation wouldn't affect your condo unit whatsoever if you're in the ten percent block?
Well, that's good to know, but I, I know many people, we, we actually, because four years ago, this came up before, and we got together as a group, and we all talked, and, you know, we're, we're a group, so I'm not just, I am representing Newport, but I also know these people, a couple of them need the money to, to pay their bills. So it's, you know, trying to say that we're limiting it, it doesn't matter, and, and it's nice to know that I'm safe, but it's, there's, there's a hundred and, hundred and, hundred and fifty more people out there that somebody's got to help out too.
Alderman Huntley?
So I appreciate the concern you bring up, I just want to correct a, a few things. Our definition of short-term rentals is ninety days in code.
It's not, okay.
First, and then, nobody for commissioning week and, what's the other one you just mentioned, boat show?
Boat show.
Totally exempted from all of our short-term rental regulations already.
Is that in the bill?
That's already in our code.
No, but it's not in the bill.
But it, it, because they don't have to get a short-term rental license for those, they would not be subject to this.
Yeah, they do.
So that is, the city.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then another is, no, this is only addressing new, so no existing ones.
Right.
Are limited by this, it's only preventing additional. And then I had a third one, oh, your number, we have, as of the staff report getting published on this, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven short-term rentals.
Okay, yeah, you could, that was the last number I found, it was one fifty-six.
Thank you for your consent of order.
I can tell you, I can tell you that two people that I know have short-term rental licenses, because they were told in order to rent for commissioning week and boat show that they are, they had to have it.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure, maybe that's a mistake inside the system.
That's not correct.
But.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, your consent of order?
Yeah, we're not, thank you for your testimony, we appreciate that. Everybody's testimony is for three minutes, and then we always allow an extra minute after three minutes, if the council could respect that it's not a question and answer thing, that we're here to listen to the public. Next person signed up is Max Gross, please come forward and state your full name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Max Gross, two fifteen Taylor Avenue in Annapolis, Maryland. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Anarona County Association of Realtors. I want to be clear that our association has not taken a position on this bill. I do want to talk a little bit about it, though, just because our, our interests are kind of cross-cutting. The realtor associations want to protect private property and let owners do what they want with their property. We also want to help solve the housing crisis and make more housing available, and we also recognize that there are things outside of data that drive people to vote, so that is why we were unable to come to a decision. But I did want, in the interest of expectations management, to talk a little bit about it. to talk a little bit about the research I have done on the issue and talk about what this bill can and cannot do. Uh, the first is that I have looked at multiple studies from the Harvard Business Review, from Oxford Economics in 2017, and then replicated in 2021. It showed that, uh, short-term rentals only drive about 1% of rental cost increases in a given area, which means that this bill will not help contain rental costs. If that is something we are aiming to do, this bill will not do that. Uh, 90 to 99%, depending on the studies, because I have seen some as high as 8%. There was one that said 30% in New Orleans, but that actually, when you look at the broader area that they blocked it out, they just moved a block outside of the, uh, periphery. Uh, so that was not necessarily the case. Uh, I also wanted to point out that, um, this bill, uh, one of the things that you come across in the literature on all types of short-term rental limitations is the difficulty of enforcement. This bill, uh, specifically lays out that block face will be defined in many cases where there isn't a clear answer by the, uh, Department of, um, Planning and Zoning, which already is a little overburdened in our city. I believe we could all agree. Uh, we are asking them to do more. And, uh, when you look at a map in the Plan 2040 document that is referenced in this bill, there's a map of all the short-term rentals that are active in Annapolis. And about half of them are shown as non-compliant with the current regulations. So now we're putting in more regulations and expecting that the Office of Planning and Zoning and the, uh, city enforcement will be able to enforce it. And I just wanted to raise some doubts and some skepticism about that. Uh, so again, we are not taking a position. Uh, it's my understanding that this bill is likely to pass, but I do want to state for the record what this bill probably will not accomplish. And it will not, uh, lower costs of rent housing. And it will, uh, not necessarily be heavily enforced. We are excited to see the council taking action on many of the housing goals in Plan 2040. And we hope that this is just the start. Um, but we would like to see maybe some more impactful ones when it comes to limiting costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Max. Alman Gay had a question.
Thank you so much, just for clarity.
Statement, not a question.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. I'm not supporting the legislation, but I'm just curious. Well, you said not a question? Can I just ask a really quick?
Max, you want to come forward?
First.
Come on. We could come back to the podium if you could. Just for one quick, one quick.
My colleague from Wood.
Exchange, uh, all the council responsible for doing exchanges at certain times, we know that.
There is no definite rule in Robert's rules. Um, I, I, I do just, I have a quick question. The Annapolis County Realtors, or Annapolis County Association of Realtors, though, is not also, you'd be, it'd be in your best interest, actually, if this legislation was not passed because you'd make more, uh, money selling units that are eligible for, uh, short-term rentals. Airbnb, correct?
Uh, we have a lot of different interests and a lot of members with a lot of different interests. Um, typically, we are very, very, very interested right now in solving the housing crisis because the more affordable housing is, the more transactions happen. The more transactions happen, the better the real estate industry is. Um, so we are interested in more transactions, not less. We are interested in more affordable housing. And we are also interested in preserving private property rights.
Thank you. That provided enough clarity for me.
All right. Thank you, Alman Gay. Thank you, thank you. Um, okay, next person is Tom Creek. Please come forward, Tom.
Hi, I'm Tom Creek, 14 Murray Avenue, Annapolis, Maryland. Okay, let me start by saying I'm in favor of SDR regulations that support maintaining a neighborhood character. Now, I'm not in support of this ordinance because the by-product of this ordinance is eroding the property values of homeowners. Let me explain. Post-short-term rental cap on a block face seems like it doesn't affect the current homeowners who rent, who don't rent, excuse me. But the truth is, it does. Once your block hits 10%, the restrictions become a red flag for future buyers, for mortgage appraisers, for real estate agents. The ordinance will without a doubt devalue owner-occupied homes, not SDRs, but owner-occupied homes above the cap, that are above the cap, or reducing the future buyer pool. Simply put, if you take and look at supply and demand, you're taking depressing demand, you have the same supply, the price has to go down. Law of economics. Just so you think that this is not just hypothetical, there are a couple of communities out there, more than a couple, a lot of communities out there that have passed ordinances similar to this. Palm Springs has a 20% cap on a block face. First year, they dropped 14%, 14% year-over-year in home prices. Um, a recent article I read, um, said, um, it impacted property values, it decreased tourism, and it led to reduction in tax revenue. Same ordinance that we're talking about tonight, only 20%, not 10%. Toby Hina, Pennsylvania, which is the Poconos, better defined, um, had a 20% cap face. They decreased 24% in one year in the values of their homes. Um, now, important to note that they've reversed the ordinance in less than a year. And they did that because frankly, people were complaining about what they could sell their house for now with the restriction in place. Um, additionally, what will happen with this? You'll actually create an underground of basically people renting, not with Airbnb and Verbo, but using other sources to rent. I won't get into the numbers, but the numbers of 287 may not be completely accurate when you really dig into what's out there in Airbnbs or in short-term rentals, is a better definition. I think you also have to add, somebody made a point about impacting Naval Academy families. And they love, because they come to see their loved ones or they come for reunions. Um, I believe this ordinance as written is not beneficial as it's intended. Um, unintentionally, who will benefit from this ordinance? Who will really benefit this ordinance unintentionally? Well, that'll be the SDR owner. These, again, let's go back, goes back to law of economics. Okay? You're going to reduce the demand, reduce the supply, excuse me. The demand stays the same, you can charge more. They'll recover the equity that they're going to lose by virtually charging more. Not necessarily they want to, but that's what will happen. There are 15 pages of ordinance, I'll try to finish up as quick as I can. There's 15 pages of ordinance here, okay, that we have on the books right now. Some great ordinances, ordinance that, that really have done some good things. The problem is, I don't think the city enforces them. And the city doesn't, it's not the city that want to enforce them. I think city staff doesn't have the time nor the wherewithal to enforce these ordinance. Simple as that. There's ordinance for noise, there's ordinance for nuisance. Um, you're, get your license revoked or suspended if you have too many, um, occurrences of those. Okay? Best of my recollection and what I can tell, what I've been able to find out, there's never been a license suspended at this point. Okay? Um, and that's a problem. So in summary, this ordinance as written, as written, does two things. It loses home equity for the homeowners who are not SDR owners. Can't violate the law of economics. That's what's going to happen. Okay? And it gains more money for SDR owners unintentionally. And I'm not sure that's what Mr. Buckley intended when he wrote this ordinance. I asked that Mr. Buckley consider. Mr. Buckley, yeah, okay. Mr. Huntley. I blame you for everything. Okay? Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it was Mr. Huntley intended this when he wrote this ordinance. I asked Mr. Huntley to consider postponing the vote tonight. And I'd welcome the opportunity, and I'm sure some other people welcome the opportunity to work with him directly on putting together an ordinance that can accomplish the objective and not cause irreparable damage to the owners that own these homes that occupy.
Thank you.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, thanks a lot, Tom. Uh, next up, Ron Schneider. Please come forward.
I'm, uh, Ron Schneider, uh, for Murray Avenue. Been a resident there since, uh, for 33 years. Uh, I would just like to, uh, uh, encourage the, the council to defer decision on this matter. Um, I think that the previous two speakers brought up some good points. You know, I am concerned about the value of equity I have in my home. So I would just ask you to take a little bit more time, look at the pros and cons of this before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Wish granted.
Uh, Jamie Graham is next.
Jamie Graham, 125 Charles Street, Annapolis, Maryland. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for letting me voice my opposition of this ordinance. Bought the property on Charles Street in 2010. So I've lived there about as long as the short-term rental applications have been. Uh, reached their tipping point. Um, you know, my dog and I walk the streets. We park on the streets. In the 15 years I've lived in that home, I've never had an issue with any of the short-term renters. I've had at least a half a dozen on my block. Um, so I have no issues. I feel like this ordinance, um, is in some way, uh, creating solutions to problems that don't exist while creating potential future problems for homeowner, full-time residents such as myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Trip. Please come forward. Recognize this guy.
I appear to have signed up for the, uh, wrong public hearing. I'll do 2125.
Plenty behind you, thank you. Uh, Renitra, you're here for this subject? Renitra Anderson? Maybe not. Uh, Linda Monday? I think it might have been for the last one. Kevin Johnson? Uh, Leanna Gould? Susan Jorgensen? Looks like that is it on the short-term rental. Anyone want to come forward? I've got all these, yeah. Come forward on short-term. Thank you.
Um, Trey Quinn. I live at 507 Schley Avenue. Um, I don't have much to add to what everyone else said. Um, one point that I did want to make, um, I assume that part of the goal is to solve an affordable housing issue that's really nationwide. Um, you know, to keep properties available for people to buy and live in. Um, I work in the mortgage industry, so I'm very familiar with the issue. Um, as it pertains to short-term rentals, one thing to consider, and actually, I speak to personal experience on this. Um, my hope was to move back to Annapolis, where I've lived for my entire life, um, after school and, uh, meeting my wife and moving back. Affordability is always, is currently an issue for my generation in purchasing. Uh, I see it every day at work. And, and one thing that I know is that most people can qualify from a mortgage standpoint for more than they can afford in real life. Because you can qualify to up to 55% of your pre-tax income, which, you know, comes somewhere around 70% of your actual take-home. In actuality, you can't spend 70% on one bill, right? You can't live that way. Most people can't live that way. But if you're able to supplement that, that income, right? With short-term rental income, as we've done, um, to be able to move closer to family and live in the town that we all love, right? City that we all love. Um, it's just something to be considered, right? And I understand that, you know, you don't want investors buying every property in the world, right? Um, but I did not, I was not familiar with the figures that you presented. And, um, I think that they kind of speak to the fact that investors have not been able to purchase every property here. Um, so that's really just, you know, I think several people have asked for a delay in vote. And I think I heard you guys mention there is maybe that on the table. Um, you know, I think that further consideration into the details of it, when you really dig in, uh, should be considered. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else like to come forward? Please come forward. You know, no, just one time, sorry. Yep, yep, yeah. Yeah, you, you can't come to the podium a second time, I'm afraid. Yeah, and, and I gave you well over five minutes. Yeah. But you could, you could contact us afterwards if you'd like. And we can, we can get in contact with you. We, we will reach out to you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, Alman Shanomar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is not a question for any of the people who came up to testify. Uh, this is a clarification. We are not voting on this issue tonight. Uh, this is just public comment. It's still going through the committee process before it comes up for a vote.
Plenty of time to get to the counselors for that. Thank you. Okay, anybody else like to come forward on this? Okay, I will declare the public hearing 01725 closed. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item for public hearings is ordinance 01925, Regulation of Tours and Historic Analysis.
Who knew? A lot of people signed up to speak. Michael Boars is first.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Boars. I live at 987 Roundtop Drive, Annapolis, Maryland, and I am an owner of a small LLC that's doing business under the name of Tour Annapolis. It's about two years old. This current bill, it seems to me from reading, proposes a couple of values, a problem and a solution to the problem. And I'm not here to, in fact, I'm here to affirm the values and also recognize the problem, but share something for your consideration when it comes to the proposed solution to the problem. So for context with regards to values, in, in the, in the market changes of the legislative summary, we read that Annapolis tours have traditionally been led by local guides with strong connections to the community alongside locally owned tour companies and specialized tours organized by historical groups. And then it goes on to describe the value of keeping historical sites in good condition, streets not overcrowded, and then also neighborhoods safe from, I guess, incursions from some of the new tour companies that have been coming about. All of those seem like great objectives and great values to me. I agree that local tour guides have a lot to share with the community. I was born in Annapolis and I grew up here. After going away to school, I came back to this area to start a graduate degree, which I'm currently working on. In the meantime, to pay some of the bills, I started this tour business, and it's been my pleasure to give historical sightseeing tours to a variety of visitors from, from several different countries, from all over the, all over our country, all kinds of backgrounds, all kinds of professions. And I really see my job as a kind of native Anapolitan, someone who loves the city, to be a kind of cultural ambassador to the city and speaking to the things that I think all of us love here. So that's some of the values that, that I share. And then with regards to the problem, we, it seems to be the introduction of national tour operators has been changing the current paradigm. And I think that this is, this is something serious to consider. One point that I wanted to share as for the solution and how to address this is that when it comes to national tour guide companies, that language, I am a small, independent, part-time tour guide. I do have a profile on a, on a website, Viator or Viator, which is technically a national website, but that is a, that is a thing that hosts small kind of tour guides and helps to get them, to get their names out there. But then I'm also a little concerned about potential unintended consequences of the bill, which could fall disproportionately on small and independent businesses like mine. And so one question that I don't see specified in, in the, in the draft is what would the fee look like going forward? Even a fee of several hundred dollars for a really small, part-time business like mine can be a serious burden. Number two, it references a certification process, and I, I'm curious what that would really look like. And would there be a possibility of making allowances for people who have been doing this? In my case, for a few years. In William's case, for 10 years, for people who have been doing this with, with some success for, for a period of time. And then the third consideration is it's speaking about a requirement of insurance. Obviously, insurance is very important. When it comes to a really small business that does, you know, a small, less than 10 people tours like mine, the real question with insurance is something, is, is the limit of liability, right? Because if you were to put something like a million dollar limit of liability for the city, then that could come out to around a thousand dollars a year. If you raise it to something like some municipalities do for legislation like this, say like a 10, a 10 million, $10 million limit of liability for the, for the city, that raise, raises the insurance rate for me probably 7,000, 10,000 a year, which at my current level of business is totally, I wouldn't be able to afford it. So those are some considerations, and I hope the council will take them, take them up in due time. Thank you.
William Ridgely, 521 Mark Road, Millersville, owner of Colonial Tours of Annapolis. Most of you probably see me walking around in colonial garb. This is my worst half, I guess you would call it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. I'm going to keep this talk kiss simple, K-I-S-S. For those of you who don't know what that means, that stands for, keep it simple and stupid. I'm going to piggyback just a little bit on what my colleague Michael here said, and I'm not looking for any answers, it's just something to think about. Number one, will you consider a tier system that would include possibly regulation exemptions and/or modifications for fees and insurances between big businesses and small businesses? Obviously, small business owners like myself and Michael here, we don't have deep pockets like the big businesses do. And secondly, what would the specific requirements and liabilities for small businesses of tour groups consist of? So that we're happy to comply and we're going to do what we need to do, we just need to know so we can work with you and we can improvise, adapt, overcome, survive, thrive, and continue to service our community. And that is all I have for tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you all, each and every one of you for your services.
Mr. Ridgely, would you send me an email just so I have your contact information?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
He'd be recognized by the chair, please.
I don't know what the, thank you. I just wanted to, you know, highlight his tours. They are fantastic. In fact, for my 21st birthday, after Red Red Wine, we did go on a tour around the city of Annapolis with him, so I highly recommend those tours.
Thank you, Mr. Oldman.
We, we appreciate you all. Thank you. Next up, Valerie Mills Cooper. Oh, sorry. Okay. Mike Carter.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Hey there, how you doing?
Thank you for letting me talk for a moment. I'm here to support the bill.
Just give you address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike Carter, I'll give you two addresses. 13 Francis Street, that is my business address over on Francis, and 40 Rockwell, where I live over off of Hilltop.
Thank you.
So I'm here to support this bill. I helped advise, I guess you would say, on the bill, if that's the right word. I am a small tour operator. Most people know my company and have no idea who I am, and that's okay. I am the owner of Annapolis Ghost Tours. I have been in business and doing tours in Annapolis for 23 years now. But I think I probably know better than almost anybody what the landscape of tourism looks like as far as walking tours. I did reach out to, at least I tried to reach out to all the tour companies in Annapolis to get their opinions before I offered my opinions. So I may have left messages for both of you and did not catch up to connect, but I'd love to talk. Because I feel like all local tour operators should be working together and talking to each other. I am regular contact with many of the tour operators. As was mentioned by my colleagues, we are facing an issue. There are national tour companies that are coming into our town. This is not the first time. We've had them come in before. There was a food tour that came in several years ago. There was also a local owned tour, the big national came in, they put a bunch of money into marketing, and I don't know what happened to the small tour, I guess they couldn't make it, and then the big company left. That's now, as far as I know, there's not a food tour in town anymore. So we lost a great resource for people to go around, learn about our food, taste our food, and try our different restaurants. The reason I feel that we as tour operators need a, an ordinance such as this is to keep the playing field level. This was not intended to exclude anybody. It's supposed to be easy and make it easier for us, the local business owners who are very small. I mean, I employ anywhere between six and 15 guides at any given time. I'm probably bigger than some of the companies, but I'm not massive. These national companies, they employ thousands of people across the country. They do not maintain offices here. They do not, they do nothing for our community other than take. They come in here, they, they literally exist in the ethereal, they exist in the internet. They put out advertising, they put out marketing, they get people booking on these tour platforms, as was mentioned, Viator, Get Your Guide, and then they send an email or text to a local contractor guide who they've hired, who is then told to be at a certain place at a certain time, and then they give up a tour. That money goes, all of it, except for the small fee that that contractor makes and maybe some tips, every other dime goes out of state, leaves our city, leaves our county, leaves our state, does zero for us. My company, every one of my tour guides lives here, they're all local, I'm local, I pay local business tax, you know, I pay tax on everything I earn, I pay tax on, you know, on my properties and everything else. So, you know, I give, I don't just take. And these national companies just want to come in and take. Some of the rules, it's pretty straightforward what we're asking. We're just asking that people get a permit, and my thinking is, I understand it's going to be very inexpensive, it's not, the goal is not for the city to make money on it, it's just to, you know, cover some of the time and effort of the city employees. But the goal really, more than anything else, is just to keep that playing field level and have certain rules. One of them is insurance. Liability insurance is really actually not that expensive. I'd be happy to talk to some other tour operators, there might be ways I can help them keep those costs down. But the purpose of insurance is so that if somebody were to be injured on one of these tours, it takes the onus off the city and it puts on us as a company. We should be, it is our responsibility. If I walk somebody into a, into a hole in the street without, you know, the construction hole, that, that should be on me, that shouldn't be on the city. So my insurance would cover something like that. The big one is trading under your legal name. There is one national company that's come here and they are trading under my name. They're literally using my name. And they are in violation of a trademark, they're in violation of all sorts of laws, and they don't care. So if they could be, if they had to follow, get a permit to do business here, they would agree to follow that rules and they would have to call themselves by what their national chain is and what they're legally called, not just make up a name. In fact, they've changed their name five times. Almost the last three were two names that I legally have DBAs for within the state, legally registered. So that's what that is there for. We're not really, as a tour operator, I don't feel in any way, shape, or form that this impinges upon my ability to do business. In fact, I think it's going to help myself and my fellow tour operators do business without fear that some big, deep-pocketed company is going to come in and just use our names, use our, you know, our reputations, and that's a big thing for me, and I'm sure for these gentlemen as well, our reputations. We work very hard, be a great service to the community and to all of our visitors, not to mention, you know, to the local bars and restaurants. So I offer, offer pub tours of our content. And, you know, that puts a lot of money into those restaurants and bars. On average, I do about 6,000 people on a pub tour. Think about that, even if it's just $5 a head going to a bar. What that works out to over the course of the year.
That's four, that's over four minutes, Mike, so thank you so much. Thank you for your amazing service for the many years you've done that. And what street has the scariest house in Annapolis?
I would probably say Prince George Street.
All right, I thought so, I thought so. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the correct answer is Rockwell Court, because it's where we both live.
Anybody else like to come forward and speak on 01925? Thank you all. Thank you for the amazing job you do for this city. I declare the public hearing closed on that. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda for public hearings is 02025, sale of city-owned property at 932 Spy Road and 935 Spy Road Lot 1.
Thank you. One person signed up to speak, please come forward, Dan Clements.
Good evening. My name is Dan Clements. I live at 17 Southgate Avenue. Most importantly to you, I live there with Amy Clements, who is the president of the Spa Creek Conservancy and has been so for 18 years, and it is in that reason that I am here again. Quick history, 2018, the city decided it wanted to put 48 $1 million townhouses on these properties. The Conservancy was greatly concerned about what was in the soil and what would happen to the disruption of the soil. We required, it was really us, I have the emails with me. The city then had to do a serious study of what was in the soil. As a result of those studies, the city had to abandon the concept of putting 48 townhouses on the east side, west side is where the salt dome is, because the land was so contaminated, MDE said you'd have to dig down at least 10, perhaps 15 feet to get rid of the contamination before you could put housing on that property, and the expense would be at least $10 million. Okay? Now, then after that, and I've read and seen that the proposal now is for this property on the west side where the salt domes are to perhaps be hacka housing, so let's put black and brown and poor white people on contaminated soil. Okay? Let's do that. So then the city did come up and, and did decide to have stage two of the studies, which I got to see today for the first time, and I commend it to your reading, stage two. It is frightening what is in the soil on both sides, including under the salt dome. Now, having said that, let me, because you all don't really know me, I'm a member of the Maryland Bar, I've been a member of the Maryland Bar for 53 years. I have written at least 45 or maybe 50 pieces of legislation, all as a volunteer, before the state legislature, and have written it and gotten it passed on issues as wide-ranging as adoption to getting funds for Special Olympics and for victims of auto accidents and wrongful death and products liability. Why do I bring that up? I bring that up because I keep reading ordinance 2025, which says nothing. It says you're going to sell it for a buck to the resilience authority, and that's all it says. So I listened, and Amy and I both listened the other day to the Environmental Matters Committee hearing for over an hour and whatever, and all I heard was conflicting information. There's no known issue as to how this is going to be used, there's no discussion in this, it says nothing, but you're going to give it to the commission, I mean, to the authority for a dollar, and apparently they're going to then apply for a grant, and it's being rushed through because they want to get a federal grant before October the applications have to be put in, apparently for $4 million. It doesn't say where that $4 million is going to be used. Is it going to be used to assist and renovate under Weems Whalen? Is it going to be used on the east side for perhaps for more state buildings, is it going to be used on the west side? It fails to mention anything. It just says you're selling it. There's no preamble. There's no discussion of why or where or what's going to happen to this property. I've read tons of pieces of legislation, I've never read anything like this, which tells me nothing. And then I listened to the hearing, and I still have no clue of what this property is going to be used for. And by the way, just, I walked the property, walked the property yesterday, both properties. MDE requires a setback from Spa Creek of 100 feet. That's absolutely not the case of all the properties now, which are on the, on the Weems Whalen side, and it's probably not true around the salt dome. So when you consider this, and I realize, you know, there's going to be another hearing, and I'll try to make it on Wednesday to listen, but I know I can't talk at those or ask questions, what does this say? How do you know how it's going to be used? How do you know, why is it seven years? And, and what I did hear, just last point, Mr. Vogel said, oh, well, they're going to do construction at the same time of remediation. Constructing what? Where? By whom? Who has the contract? There's no preamble that tells you what this is about and they want you to sign off on it? It's silly and totally inadequate to come to a city council and ask the council to say, sell this property for a buck, we'll decide later what's going to happen to it. It's city property.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak on this? Anyone here else here for 02025? I declare the public hearing closed on that. Mr. City Attorney, please, oh, sorry, 02025, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda for public hearings is 02125, Harbor, Annapolis Harbor Lines at 423 Chester Avenue on Back Creek.
Don't see anybody signed up for Harbor Lines. Anybody here for 02125? Trip, all right, thank you.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Trip Fulton, on behalf of Safe Harbor Marina's, my address is 200 West Gate Circle. Safe Harbor is a commercial marina located at 423 Chester Avenue in Eastport, for those who don't know. The genesis of this legislation, for those who might not know, is essentially the city's, it's a mouthful, Sixth Street Street End Park Project, which is a public street end park plan located at a street end in the Eastport community. Mr. Mayor, the Sixth Street Street End Park Project effectively eliminates four commercial slips on Safe Harbor's southernmost pier at its commercial marina. While the city received Port Warden's approval to move forward with this project, I think it was sometime last winter, the Port Warden's decision is currently on appeal in the Circuit Court for Anoronal County, albeit it has stayed pending the outcome of this legislation. Essentially, one of the things that needs to be considered before improvement or additional waterway development by either a private party or the city is implemented is something called navigational hazards. And candidly, Safe Harbor doesn't think that navigational hazards were properly considered with this plan. I think anyone who views the city's plans for this project will quickly realize one of two things, either A, these four slips that I'm mentioning would become totally unusable by this project, or B, if they do, if they are arguably usable, navigating in and out of them will undoubtedly become either impossible or hazardous. This legislation is specifically designed to alleviate that issue and allow Safe Harbor to essentially recoup the four slips that it will undoubtedly use by this, lose by this project. This isn't some big break for Safe Harbor, it's really just a way to get them whole again. The way this legislation does that is it selects really the only location that it can to offer a minor modification to the existing harbor lines. Essentially, what it does is it bumps out harbor lines at the widest portion of Back Creek along Safe Harbor's shoreline, and it will allow essentially four slips there in place of the four slips that they are losing by virtue of the city's project. At the end of the day, if this legislation is passed, I think it will ultimately resolve the litigation that's ongoing at the Circuit Court. I think it'll allow the city and Safe Harbor to move forward with whatever plans they both have in store right now, and I think both parties will be totally satisfied with that compromise. Thank you for listening to me this evening. Alderman Gay, if you have any questions, feel free.
No, 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 I just want this, as well as the last legislation referred to housing and human welfare. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak on 02125? Thank you all. I declare the public hearing closed on that. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda for public hearings is 02425, election report deadlines.
Have no one signed up to speak on the exciting election report deadlines? Anybody here? Going once, going twice, going three times? I declare the public hearing on 02425 closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is legislative acts, beginning with the first reader. First reader ordinance is 03125, issuance of general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes.
I'm going to get it. Thank you. The second, please.
Second. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Let's refer 03125 to the Finance Committee and the Financial Advisory Commission. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, legislative action on second reader, beginning with ordinance 0625, clearing snow and ice from city sidewalk.
Is there a motion to adopt 0-6-25 on second reader?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt 0-6-25 on third reader?
Second.
You, Alderman Gay, then Alderman Savage.
Just quickly checking if the issues with the county have been resolved. I know at previous meetings you've mentioned some concerns.
City, acting city manager, or?
I would turn it to Alderman Savage, actually.
As a representative from the county, Alderman Savage, or, no, actually, I don't think we have anyone here besides you. Are you, are you familiar with it? Jackie, no. Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, well, I mean, related issue, we did send a letter to the county as a body asking for a meeting, so hopefully the mayor's office will hear at some point from county executive's office regarding that. Because that is one thing I wanted to bring up, though, is when this gets drafted into the, when the rules and regs get drafted for this, we'll have to actually be deliberate to sit down with the county to develop some kind of MOU, because the... to sit down with the county to develop some kind of MOU, because the, I can't remember if you were at the meeting, Deputy City Manager, but the issue was, you know, since we have county roads going through the city and county sidewalks, how are we going to, how is the county and the city, how are they going to handle enforcement along those shared corridors? This legislation does not make the distinction, so I think we'll have to do that in whatever regulation gets adopted internally.
Thank you, Alderman Pendell Charles.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Savage, you know, I just thought about something, we have a couple of homes on West Street, would we have to consult with and coordinate with the State Highway Administration as well?
Alderman Savage?
I don't believe so, because I believe with West Street, we have maintenance responsibility, even though it is state-owned. I'm not sure if anybody has additional, other information, that's my understanding.
Public, we can confirm that with public word.
But that'll be important to look at in case we need to do the same thing with the state, a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Huntley.
And I'd just say that at least as far as the way the code is written, it doesn't make a distinction in the responsibility to clear sidewalks between whether the street and by extension the sidewalk is city-owned or county-owned, it just says you're responsible for clearing your, the sidewalk adjacent to your property.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to roll call, Alderman Finlayson.
Yeah, I was just asking, Alderman Pendell Charles, don't the sidewalks convey with the houses? Not with the street?
Uh huh, yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to be clear, so it's not a state issue, those houses that you was referencing?
Right.
Those houses are in the city and city property, so the sidewalks are city property.
Our issue has been a score on a state road or a county road that is responsible and...
Okay, fine, thank you for that clarification.
...a position that's taken by the county that, and the state that we need to communicate on. Okay, so we'll do a roll call, thank you.
Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neil.
Aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Shannon Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, next item on the second, agenda for second reader, ordinance O-825, Chesapeake Children's Museum lease renewal through June 30, 2030.
Is there a motion to adopt O-825 on second reader?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O-825 on third reader?
Second.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir, Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neil.
Aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Shannon Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Resolutions for second reader, beginning with R-2725, renaming of the Noah Hillman parking garage.
Is there a motion to adopt R-2725 on second reader?
So moved. Second.
You, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir, Mayor Buckley.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Huntley.
Aye.
Alderman O'Neil.
Aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Shannon Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Gay.
Aye emphatically.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
The resolution passed.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda, we took that one off, right, Regina?
That's it, yeah.
The agenda is concluded, Mr. Mayor.
All right, is there anything else for good order? Alderman Gay?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, the renaming of Noah Hillman Park Garage will take place immediately, correct?
Well, there's some mechanics, I'm sure, but we're working on that, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, yeah, I just, I, I look forward to being at the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new name.
And it will still be the Hillman Garage, but it will be the Noah Mills Hillman, so we will all still call it the Hillman Garage.
The Mills Garage.
There'll be a little plaque dedicated to that amazing piece of civil rights that happened here.
I look very, very much forward to that piece of history being recognized, thank you very much for your leadership.
Thank you, Alderman Shannon Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to give a heads up to my colleagues and my constituents and the city as a whole. Our last meeting in July, I will not be present due to having to travel for a work conference to California, and I'm sorry, I will not be here, but I trust you'll get along with that.
All right, thank you, Alderman Huntley.
Yeah, I had two things, one, I just wanted to put on the record that it sounds like we maybe need to talk a little bit more with some of the tour operators, but the intention is for anyone who is not making money off tours to be exempt, that's what the definition of commercial is meant to go for, so that might not apply to the folks here, but I had some other people who wanted me to make sure that was clear. The second thing is, and I'd like the city attorney's guidance on this as I move forward, but I'd like to make a motion that we refer O-1425, specifically the sections related to height district changes to the Historic Preservation Commission.
I think you're allowed to do that at this point, Alderman.
So we can't make a motion now?
You can't, no.
Well, the bill's not on the agenda.
It's not possible.
What is?
But it will be a possible, at the next council meeting when it's on the agenda.
Okay, so we would have to do it after we have public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
All right, that's better, I think, sure.
Thank you, Alderman Finlayson.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank Mrs. Valerie Mills Cooper for coming to join us this evening and for sharing the many attributes of her father, Walt.
Thank you, Alderman Savage? Nope. Anybody else? Okay, well, a good lively discussion tonight, anybody going to get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.